Guys, we're gonna call the council meeting to order. At this point, I would like to bring up Pastor Kyle Parker with Eastern Shore Presbyterian Church to lead us in our invocation, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's do great. Father, we are grateful to be a part of an incredible city which has had your hand upon her for such a great length of time. It is evident that you have seen fit to provide us some great leaders that represent the varied and diverse needs of our community. We pray for the challenges which are myriad before them this evening and each of the evenings they gather. We pray that you would also allow them to be encouraged by the fruits of these labors. Even hearing reports and seeing the progress of our youth fields along Reno Road indicates the health of the city, its interest generationally. Hearing the accounts of many of these council members that are involved in coaching various youth sports, we are not a detached city, and to this we need to be deeply grateful. We are thankful for the great economic promise of our city, the diversity of our downtown, the expansion into new retail areas, the two Publix locations, the addition of the other grocery store. We pray that you would see fit to use these well, and to your glory, to the benefit of our city. We pray that you would be with Mayor Sullivan, the work that she has, the diligence that she has shown would be revealed well, and our gratitude toward her. We thank for each of these council members and the work they do. We pray your blessings upon their families. We thank you, Lord, for an incredible city that has many churches that contribute to and pray for and are willing to aid our city. Even looking through the various items tonight to see how many of them are really oriented toward those that have great need, this is something that we should, as a community, be deeply grateful for. We pray for your hand to be upon our city, upon its leaders, upon its people. We pray, Lord, for the celebration of Mardi Gras that will soon be on us. We pray for each of the crews that will present parades and have festivities, that it would be a ruckus and wonderful event, that there would be great safety. We pray for those that are in our police force, our fire departments. We pray, Lord, for our medical community, that you would be with them as they stand in the gaps in our greatest needs. We are thankful as a people, in the Lord's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are all.
Thank you. They just called it. Next on the council agenda is item number one, which is to approve the minutes of the January 9th, 2023 regular city council meeting and the January 9th work session. Council, any...
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, minutes are approved. Item number two is a report of the mayor.
First and foremost, I want to recognize Girl Scout Troop 8017. They are here with us. They are here tonight to present on the council agenda, but as part of that, they're also earning their civics badge, their civics badge. So, real excited to have you ladies here with us. Thank you for being here for the parents and everybody, and thank you for what you do for our community. I know I've seen you planting trees and just out doing community service projects, and we really appreciate that. Makes you good citizens of our community. Thank you. The other, just a couple of other things that I wanted to tell everybody about. Thursday is the State of the City address. That is going to be Thursday, right here at the Civic Center, from 5:00 to 7:00. We will be serving Kneecap Dogs, so for anybody who'd like to come out for that. But plus, every department is represented. They all have tables set up, informational tables, so you're able to go around and ask questions and find out information that you need to know. I will give a brief presentation. We are gonna record that, so it will be available online after the fact if you can't make it. But a really nice event, and last year we had a lot of people turn out, and I hope they do the same this year. We also have, before we meet again on February 13th, we have two events, the Pirate Dash, which I'm sure a lot of the kids are participating in, and also the Champagne and Chocolate at the library, which is a fundraiser. They are, as everybody knows, are undergoing a capital campaign to build out that second floor, which we are a contributor to, but this is one of their fundraisers to support that effort. So please support the library and attend that event, or buy tickets or make a donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Guys, moving right along. Item number three is public participation for agenda items. Five and six are public hearings, so if you have something on agenda items number seven through 22, now is your opportunity. You will have three minutes. Seeing none, I will close public participation, and we will go to item number four, which is council comments. Councilman Martin.
I don't have any comments.
Okay.
No comments here either.
Councilman Boone.
None for me.
Oh, I'm not gonna let that stand. We won't meet before the first Mardi Gras parade, so just encourage everybody to come out, have a good time, but please be safe. Use good judgment out there. Streets, barricades are up in most places, but watch your kids. Fairup's pretty laid back, and it's different than Mardi Gras most places. People like to run out in the street because it's a little, it feels a little safer, but the dangers are still there, so just keep an eye on your babies. But that's all I got, so we'll keep going. Item number five is public hearing, ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, 1317 and 1572. It's request to amend ordinance number 1317 and 1572, known as the Fly Creek PUD. The property of Highlands at Fairup Village LLC is approximately 11.76 acres and is generally located on the north and south side of Cordy Ridge Road and the east of the Publix on U.S. Highway 98 in Fairup, Alabama.
Thank you, Council President. And I have been requested to start kind of saying who I am, because I think a lot of people get confused with the development side. So I am Hunter Simmons, the Planning Director for the City of Fairhope, here to present these cases that come through the Planning Commission and elevate to the city council. So this is a Fly Creek PUD that I think everybody is familiar with. I'll say on the front end, this is a relatively minor amendment to the overall PUD. It does sit on 11.76 acres of that portion, and I'll kind of get through this a little uniquely, but I think it's the simplest way. But in essence, there's three minor revisions being proposed here. That's to modify the work-live units to townhomes, to reconfigure the road network and adding a new private interior road, and then to modify the unit mix and elevations, basically exactly where, which townhomes lie, and a little tweak to the architectural style. So for reference, on the left, everything you see on the left-hand image in light blue is the Fly Creek PUD. As y'all know, that consisted of the Publix development there on Parker Road, the out parcels, Fly Creek Avenue commercial. There was quite a bit on the east side of this image, this residential that hasn't, has yet to be constructed. And then there was the component we were looking at on the right-hand side of the screen, which consisted of the apartments that have already been constructed, and then everything kind of highlighted in this light blue is what I'm gonna call the townhome section of the development. Five units have been constructed and seeking to tweak a little bit the, as the three things we mentioned previously. This is kind of the third revision of this PUD on this, that affected this portion. It originally was 240 units of apartments, 90 flats and slash townhomes, and live-work units. I'm gonna use that term again, and we'll clear that up. But nothing has changed in the numbers, sizes, height limits. Nothing is being edited during, in this amendment. The original approval in 2006 showed the, what you see on the screen, the townhomes on the north side and the apartments in the general layout. And then in 2019, a site plan was approved for the townhomes. Just as quick references, I keep using that live-work. I do want to point out that that section's not on here. We'll tie that up in a second. But this is the general layout of the townhomes, and if you can see my mouse on the screen, these are the five units that have been constructed. So to highlight what's being changed, the, and this is the way it came through, is the review of the Planning Commission. There was an internal road added in blue, a realignment of the entrance in yellow, and then the live-work units being amended to just be townhomes in essence.
Hunter, can you go back to that, please? Can you orient me? Is that the fire station?
Fire station is this parcel here. So everything's staying in the same orientation. You're looking kind of at this portion here. Everything highlighted in blue. Fire station sits here.
Got it. Okay.
And then the Publix building, it kind of sits behind the Publix.
I got you.
Okay. So this did go through the Planning Commission for review, and they did unanimously recommend approval with the conditions on the screen, and that was buildings shall fall within established setbacks and allow room for required buffers. A formal site plan, MOP, shall be conducted, and then detailed floor plans will be, for each building type with front and rear elevations, will be provided. Since we've made it through Planning Commission, some of these have been amended, so I'm gonna show you kind of the differences between what we saw at Planning Commission. For example, the extension of Bascom Way has been amended. We'll show you details on those. To break down the three recommendations a little further, this is the portion, so Fly Creek Avenue is, when you come into the south side of that development, and there's the retail on the ground floor and then access to the other upper units, it actually comes in from the parking lot at Publix, there was, there's an area here on a pretty good slope that has yet to be developed. That is where the live-work unit was proposed, and lived-work, I use that very loosely because it wasn't defined in the original PUD.
And it's supposed to be a commercial, from what I understand.
Live-work was not, it's, generically, live-work is typically a place that someone lit, one entity lives and works in that place, in that same location.
Mixed use.
Not, live-work's typically a little different from mixed use, and it's the same, you know, I live upstairs and I work downstairs. I might have an office and go upstairs. That's typically live-work. It wasn't defined, nor do we have that definition in our zoning ordinance. So, you know, then that weighed a lot into kind of what we're proposing here. So the change here is to adapt to some of the market conditions. They didn't want to do the actual live-work concept and are proposing to do the same townhomes on this site. I believe there's eight units on this site, and we'll look at that site plan differently. I do wanna just, and I'll leave this on and kind of talk about the next two slides in detail. This is kind of the commercial component, and I'm recommending we approve this because it doesn't conflict with our comp plan, nor does it conflict with the approved PUD. But I do kind of feel like it's a little bit of a missed opportunity being here in the middle of this commercial. It could, there could be a commercial component that could tie all this together. So just would ask to consider that as we move forward, but I don't think it's in opposition. So we kind of talked about this a little bit during Planning Commission. You know, maybe it could be some kind of a, not necessarily the architectural style, but something that does add a little bit of a restaurant, so the townhome apartments could go there. It would kind of help with some of the office on, office space that's yet to be leased on Fly Creek Avenue. Just a few more, and I will say, work, live-work can still be accommodated in the townhomes if it is approved. So live-work, we do allow home occupancies, and that concept can be approved even if it is townhomes. The second item was a reconfiguration of a road. The middle imagery that you see is the existing islands on Cordy Ridge Road, and the first proposal we saw at Planning Commission added a entrance at this that was gonna have to remove half the island, kind of create some strange, a strange intersection, and it was gonna push buildings right up to the front. Since this, since the Planning Commission, we have seen the revised plan on the right, so we don't really need the condition that was there at Planning Commission. As well, we had a condition that detailed floor plans should be provided, so we have also received those, and they are, both of those things are in exhibits within this ordinance that you did receive in your packet. And this is the final site plan that we are recommending for approval. The only thing I will mention, we did add a condition, and everybody on our side knows it, but the sidewalks and trail, trails and crosswalks are not finalized within this plan. There will be a follow-up MOP plan that we will look at those in detail, but that has been added as a condition, so we've removed the ones that have been accommodated, and we do recommend approval with the three conditions on the screen. And just to be clear, those are buildings shall fall within established setbacks and allow room for required landscapes and buffers. A formal site plan slash multi-occupancy project should be conducted, and then final layouts of sidewalk, trails, and crosswalks will be approved during the follow-up multi-occupancy review case. And if there's any questions, I will be happy to answer them, or we have a team of folks right here behind me on the row over my left shoulder.
All right, well, first thing we're gonna do is, will somebody introduce?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
And then I will open the public hearing at this point. So if anybody has anything on agenda item number five, now is your opportunity to speak. All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will open up council comments. Council, any comments or questions for Hunter or staff on this project?
I like the live-work concept, but I think the developer pointed out, I mean, if you've got vacant commercial space still available, it doesn't make sense to...
Add more to it.
To continue adding more commercial, commercial space.
Got a question. Is the live-work idea the same concept as the project going across from the street from Ace Hardware? Isn't that the same thing?
Generically, no. I think it's been missed, I think it was been misused, that's mixed use. Live-work in nationally is more of a concept of you're gonna build a space for the same person to live and work under the same roof. Where mixed use is, there's a commercial component, whether that's office or retail on the ground floor, and then office or separate individual residential units above it. So that project is a little bit more mixed use, and it's kind of spread out a little bit.
I think COVID changed the definition of live-work.
We don't have one.
It's your home.
The idea was to, you know, work at this, referring to the project across from Ace Hardware.
Yeah.
The idea was to live in the same confines as where you're gonna work.
Yeah. And that, that's, mixed use lends itself to that, but it's not a requirement of that. Where live-work is a concept that I'm quite literally gonna live downstairs and walk inside upstairs to my house.
But you can't rent that, the concept of out there at the Publix now, you can't rent that out, or you can't, you have to, whoever runs the business has to live there?
Nothing was built in a live-work concept out there. So this erases the one, you know, component that is there. Yeah, there's some mixed use there that, or actually, it's commercial on the upper end.
Hunter, would you advise us that maybe, I mean, talking about this live-work space as very ambiguous at best as to what that is, would it be your recommendation that moving forward, we are more, a little more concrete in what we mean by that?
Absolutely. I think, and we have been, so the only other time that's come up has been in a PUD on 309 Eagle Side, and it was a little bit more defined. We actually had floor plans there and limits on what could be done within that PUD. Otherwise, I'm not sure it's something we really, it's a unique thing. We have mixed use clearly defined, so I don't think live-work is something we need to...
Include moving forward.
Not in our base ordinance. In these special projects, PUDs, we just need to make sure what the vision is, whichever applicant we're seeing is clearly defined.
Okay. All right, council.
I have, Hunter, so you said that we're gonna, we're gonna do the pedestrian circulation plan during the MOP? Is that right?
Yeah, so...
And we have an idea about...
There was some...
All that's together?
And I don't want to say, I don't want us to, and what I mean by that is, we did get a lot of the comments we had in Planning Commission resolved in this plan that's on the screen right now. So I believe the Cordy Ridge Road, one of the things we really wanted to, was concerned about on Cordy Ridge Road was how that public street looks. So the buildings were amended to kind of front that street and give a good streetscape. Sidewalks were included there along that street, but we didn't look at this in detail. There's gonna be some internal trails, you know, as you can see, I'll go back to, both of the previously approved plans had those internal trails. We didn't get to that level of detail in this PUD, so that will be looked at during the MOP. And I just want to make sure we're not, typically when we approve a site plan, we're approving that layout. That's, the sidewalks are not necessarily what we're approving in that during this review. So it's just to, just to clarify what we're proving.
Right.
So there, in essence, there's gonna be more, probably more trails and sidewalks than you see on this plan.
All right, council, any other questions or comments for Hunter at this point?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
I know we were changing the architectural review, or the architectural design, excuse me. Did we have any, was that the pictures I saw?
Yeah, this is a sample of the...
Pictures that's been in there the packet the whole time. How much of that?
So what we received, and I'm sorry, I didn't want to sit here and have 20 slides up...
No worries.
But you're, I think it was Exhibit C, shows all the elevations, and what we're actually looking at on the screen that we saw in Planning Commission was actually the rear elevation. So we wanted to make sure both sides, especially those running roads, were detailed and had some architecture detail. We did receive that as well as floor plans.
Okay. All right, council, if there are no additional questions or comments at this time, absent a motion for immediate consideration, this will lay over two weeks.
Layover, Hunter.
A layover.
Thank you.
Before we get into number six, Hunter, I would like to ask the council to do something for me, and that is, can we suspend with the order and bump number 22, our Girl Scouts up to, up to at bat right now so they don't have to listen to the rest of this meeting?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and consider item, agenda item number 22. Yep. I've got a second.
Second. All those in favor of bumping the Girl Scouts up to right now?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we will move right into item number 22, which is a request for Girl Scout Troop 8017 to request permission to sell Girl Scout cookies at the corner of Fairup Avenue and North Bancroft Street from Friday, January 27th, 2023 through February 25th, 2023, with booths set up on Friday evenings, Saturday mornings, and Sunday afternoons. Please come forth. So what do you guys think? Should we, you want us to give you a corner a couple days of the week to sell some Girl Scout cookies? You think that'll help?
Anybody scared to speak into the mic?
Yeah, tell us your name.
Somebody.
Come forward, tell us your name.
My name is Peyton, and...
It's okay, baby.
You're doing great, Peyton.
You're doing good, girl.
Fine job.
You're doing great.
Why we are here is because we would really like, if we may, to have our Girl Scout cookie booths at the corner in downtown.
All right.
I'm sold. You did a great job. Great job, Peyton.
Good job. What courage. That's a courage badge. Is that, is that, yeah, it's courage.
Public speaking badge, for sure.
Public speaking courage.
So, okay, so we have, so we had the, so we had the Adventure Fools, and we had them last year, but they're kind of new. And then, and then we got, did we get any lemonade? Yeah, raspberry ones, but we couldn't get, we couldn't get them for some reason, but we, yeah, they're online only.
Supply chain.
What, sorry? Sorry, what'd you say? Oh, oh, yeah, order them online, yeah.
Hey, if you've watched our meetings enough, you'll know that we are a comedy of errors up here every time, so y'all, you ladies are doing wonderful, wonderful.
Excellent.
I have a question. Are they cheaper by the case?
I can tell you for a fact, they're not.
It was worth a shot, anyway.
Those cookies are gold. They go up every year.
Look, worth every penny. Please, please. Hey, don't be shy. Anything you ladies want to tell us, I'm all ears. Let's go.
Touch that mic. Got it, girl.
We're saving up money to go on our trip to Savannah.
Very nice, Savannah.
Savannah, Georgia.
All right.
And to get food for pets and homeless shelters.
Okay, very nice, very nice.
The home place of, the birthplace of Girl Scouts, Julian, Julian, and Love.
She's the creator. All right.
Please, help yourself.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry. My name is Isabel Trapp. I am a freshman at Fairhope High School, and I just wanted to say that I really hope you consider letting us have our booth, because whenever we have booths downtown, it is a great opportunity to meet new people and get to interact with the citizens of Fairhope, and to just meet people and be able to sell them cookies that they love for years. And, you know, everyone enjoys a good Girl Scout cookie. And sometimes people, you know, don't have Girl Scouts stop by their houses because like, they just can't get there, they don't have any Girl Scouts in the neighborhood. So when they come downtown and they see a cookie booth, they can come and order from us instead of either having to do it online or just not getting any at all. And also, it's just for our Girl Scout troop, it is a good activity for us to be able to interact with people in the community and, you know, just work on our talking-to-people skills, and it, I, just in general, I feel like it is a great opportunity for younger Girl Scouts to, you know, be able to talk to people better and just interact with people in general, and I think that it's just a good opportunity for every Girl Scout to be able to sit at a cookie booth or sell cookies in general, because it can just be a great experience for everyone involved in it.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna have the lemons and the peanut butter.
Peanut butter and chocolate's all that matters. It's all that matters.
You have those? Oh, okay. I know you, Allison, I'll call you.
Well, council, I don't like to put pressure on you guys, but if y'all don't approve this, you...
So moved. Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, ladies, you got the streets.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job, girls.
Yeah, yeah, please come forward, let's get a picture. Y'all wanna just, y'all, y'all wanna go down, or y'all wanna...
Are we coming in?
Y'all tell us what to do. Y'all want us to stay here, y'all want us to come down?
Stand up.
If you guys just come behind and...
Perfect. Yeah, we'll just, I don't know.
Sitting might be better, height-wise, or?
Perfect, Kevin will never get up, but we'll get, we got.
Perfect. I can see everybody. One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank y'all very much, appreciate it.
Good luck, girls. Good luck, girls.
Well done, ladies, thank y'all. All right. All right, so Hunter, no pressure, but back to our regular scheduled program, another public hearing. Item number six is a request to amend ordinance number 1402, known as the Idlewild PUD. The property of Fairhope East LLC is approximately 10 acres and is generally located on the west side of State Highway 181, south of Fairhope, south of Fairhope Avenue in Fairhope, Alabama.
Thank you. This is also an amendment to an existing PUD. There is 10 acres, it's across from Walmart on 181, if you're familiar, and it does abut the Idlewild Residential Neighborhood. So, map on the left shows the limits of the PUD as approved previously. Aerial and the existing conditions are on the left. As you can see, this is kind of the, the main entrance to the Walmart parking lot, if you will, the four out parcels, and then the light traffic signal on 181 is at this intersection. This was approved in 2009. Nothing has been done to the site since then. It was basically five lots that, that just had some limits on uses and a very general layout, but, but did not have buildings sighted, nor did it have details such as the potential ponds, pedestrian walkways. It is on the screen to the left, so it did have kind of the generic location of where the pond was gonna be located, and, and a side road off of 181 that would access the five lots. There's a lot in this proposal, so it's kind of hard to see, but the site plan on the right is what's being proposed today. And it is, I'll kind of go through some of the uses here, there's a lot of information on the sheet, but this is a PUD that's actually proposing exact layouts and uses, including square footage, landscape plans, and, and the like. It does include a hotel, which is this area, and multiple buildings that consist of either retail, commercial office space, and the, there are four buildings that have residential above, so as we talked about, it's more the mixed use component. The aerial of the site is, this is looking south. You can see the entrances to the Walmart parking lot and Idlewild to the, to the west. We, we kind of overlaid the, the plan on the site to see which, where things lie. It doesn't line up exactly, but it was an attempt. This is looking north on this same site. And one of the things I'll, I'll point out while we're on the aerial, we're gonna talk about a pond and how drainage flows through the site. So, this is a pond on the, it's adjacent to the Idlewild Residential Neighborhood. It is half owned by this owner as well. And basically, there is a ditch that runs through this wood line, into a wetland area here before it drains under 181 and flows back to Calpin Creek. And we do have a aerial video here, if we need to look at anything, if y'all'd like to, we can, we can flip back to this side to, to point out anything. They have provided some architectural renderings for what the styling may be. Those are on the screen, and the lower image is the bigger building. I will point out here that this, height limit is 30 feet. In the previously approved PUD, they are recommending, or asking for, 38 feet for these parapet walls. We don't see a problem with that. It is limited to two-story hotel, and that was some concern, being adjacent to a residential neighborhood. But those parapet walls will give an opportunity to hide some of that roof equipment, and is limited in its scope. The hotel is on the screen here, there's a blow up, and you see one of the existing, or proposed out parcels listed as a restaurant. We'll point out some of the existing oak trees that are being preserved. And the uses, we'll, the retail restaurant, restaurant with one drive-through, it's actually been proposed more as a coffee shop or something along those lines, I'll point that out in detail when we get to the site plan. Hotel, office, residential, mixed use, and the square footage of each are, are within this. And as, I know counsel knows by saying for the public, if a PUD has to be built in substantial conformance of what we approved tonight. Setbacks, there was a Scribner's error, and I believe Jenny did provide you with a printout of an amended ordinance. The site plans all show 118 feet as the front setback. In the ordinance, it made it to 60 feet. That's actually the highway construction setback instead of the building setbacks. So, that's what that amendment is. And, and actually, they provided greater setbacks than the previously approved PUD on all sides, or equal to. The building coverage, the approved PUD right now allows 80% coverage on that site. So, when you look at 10 acres, eight acres could be covered with buildings by this number. They're, I'm sorry, the building coverage is 30%. The lot coverage for impervious surface, those sorts of things are 80%. So, what's being proposed in this PUD is actually reducing that to 19% for building coverage, and 39% for otherwise, that's gonna be your sidewalks, your buildings, your asphalt combined. Exterior building constructions, so the elevations are conceptual, but the, we did keep in line a requirement of the previous PUD that all buildings shall be four-sided architecture, meaning no big blank walls, and it is carrying forward with this amendment. Exterior lighting, when we see a PUD, we can allow some exceptions, and we, we are amenable to the 24-foot height limit proposed for some lighting within the parking lot. However, the existing photometric plan is not meeting with our guidelines. Actually, that's something we usually look at at the MOP, or preliminary plat, anyway. There's many different ways that we can meet those requirements, and we've already discussed some of those. Parking, because all of this is one owner managed, they have proposed a shared parking agreement that doesn't meet the strict recommendations of our zoning ordinance, but it does think about the businesses and residential units that are on site, and, and looks at their peak parking times. So, actually, we get less, less paved areas and still meet all the, the parking requirements needed. The only thing I will ask that we, we consider that is maybe not clarified to the level of the previous PUD, there are not hours of operation. The previous PUD have limited that to 11:00 PM, I believe, and, but there was no known uses, buildings where they're located. It, it doesn't make sense to have limitations on a hotel, they're gonna need to be open 24/7, but maybe some limitations on drive-through or restaurants, being that they're adjacent to a, a residential unit. Green space plan, this combines a few concepts from our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, and one instance, they're preserving land in, in blue. Then we have green space and open space in green, and then they're actually creating more of a downtown feel and pedestrian concourse in pink. That's the hardscape, but, but they're walking, kind of a walking street internally. This is not approving a landscape plan, but I do want to talk about that briefly, and I'll go ahead. There's quite a few requirements of the previous PUD that are carrying forward, including buffers against neighboring properties. And we did receive this revised plan. I think there was a lot of concerns from the residences in Idlewild. While this is not something we're approving at this stage, I do want to bring it forth to see, to show that they are listening and have amended things to accommodate that. So, on the bottom side of this plan, there's two 20-foot strips. If you'll remember me referring to that drainage ditch that runs along the property line.
Caber.
That was installed when Idlewild was in. There was concerns about getting in there and doing any construction in that, because you're gonna disturb the landscape that's currently existing, that does offer a nice buffer. They've actually changed their plans enough, and will be able to leave that during construction, and hopefully after, to leave that 20-foot strip. And then there's an additional 20-foot strip that will be planted, and you can see the heavy planting that will be coming to increase that, that buffer. We also point out here, there's some wetlands in this area, and a non-traditional, I would say detention pond. So, you can see the, the variety of plants and, and volume of plants that are grading here. There is a boardwalk that connects the north end of the property to the south for connectivity purposes. So, a boardwalk crosses through this lower area and ties back into the internal sidewalks. And you can see that blow up of that area here. We'll, we'll probably revise this, the layout of this boardwalk in the future reviews, but there is also, and this is probably one of the more contentious items on the agenda. When this plan was previously approved, as you all know, connectivity's always been a bigot, focus of the city, and Orleans Drive that's in Idlewild came out of the Planning Commission with connectivity, vehicular 50-foot right-of-way coming right out to 181. The planning, I mean, when it got to City Council, they amended that so that it was just pedestrian connectivity with a, basically a gate for emergency access. So, when we looked at, at this, there may still need to be some emergency access, but that's something we can look at in the PUD. We really wanted to focus on the pedestrian bike, and at this day and age, low-speed vehicles, otherwise known as golf carts, connectivity into this, this area. What's shown on the screen is a draft of what they proposed. We, we don't want parking in the right-of-way, nor in any required easements, and this will probably be amended, well, this will be amended to tie in more to the paved surfaces, so when we get to those reviews. But just wanted to bring that up and show, you know, that the final layout here is not revised, not finalized, but this was, I think, some of the biggest concern from the neighborhood, and we heard that, and, but at the same time, connectivity is a prime focus of, of the city, and I think we've kind of met halfway, taking the vehicular connectivity out of the way, but I really feel you did see a petition for no connectivity of any kind, and I don't think that meets the goals that we're, we've been striving for, for years. So, you may, you may hear some more comments about that. Signage is not approved in this, they did show an example, but they will meet our sign ordinance, and materials are, are provided for the future buildings. We, we kind of looked at drainage on a high level, just to make sure things fit, but we are not approving a drainage plan. Again, this is the, the pond, the ditch that flows into a wetland and goes underneath 181. This was the, the grading plan as they presented to us. There's a little bit of grading in a wetland buffer that's gonna have to get cleared up, so again, we're not approving the, the grading plan. Again, they have agreed to save the heritage trees on the site, including, and I'll zip forward for a second. You can see redesigning, they redesigned the internal road networks to have a kind of a roundabout around the, the large trees on site. And then they also already done a traffic study, and I'll just show those improvements. These are the improvements at 181. There will also need to be a, there is a signal at this intersection, but they're gonna have to put some, at minimum, some new mast arms with signals facing this new intersection, but, but could also be moving existing poles, depending on, on some of the conversations with ALDOT. But they have agreed to do that work. We're gonna look at more things in the, the MOP, and just kind of made a list of, of some of those that we're not getting to exact answers to in this, this approval. The Planning Commission did review this, voted unanimously to recommend approval, and the top of the screen is, you can see three conditions that were ended with prior to City Council hearing. I've stricken through those three, and, because they were accommodated, and then added just for memorializing that change, front setback shall be 118 feet. Otherwise, the, the condition did carry over from Planning Commission for a strong landscape buffer to provide screening, such as evergreens, in addition to providing significant light pollution prevention, to review, be reviewed at the time of the MOP approval. With that said, I can answer any more questions you may have. Sorry. Or. Yep, we've got, we've got some folks here, if there's any questions on the client side.
All right. Hunter, first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask somebody to introduce the ordinance. All right, we've introduced the ordinance, and I would like to open up the public hearing for agenda item number six. All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and then I will move to counsel comments. Counsel, anybody got any questions for Hunter?
Does the project take into consideration the future widening of 181?
So, that is a detail that it does. What I can show you, landscape plan better illustrate, best illustrates that. So, the line right here, the property line is, is at the north side of the screen. This is a highway construction setbacks in this, where the, kind of the sidewalks and parking starts. So, that 60 feet is a highway construction setbacks, if it's needed. I, I don't think it'll be needed in this area, but, because I think at this point, they're kind of moving more to the east. But there is a requirement for some landscape buffers, things like that, that we will have to look at in MOP. So, you can see they've shown some of their buffers apart to screen, parking lot, trees that are in that highway construction setback. So, we'll confirm that those are in an okay location, that won't conflict with any future expanding, or they might have to be pulled in to even further into the site. But yes, very much, they, they have already spoken with ALDOT, have been for almost a year about this project.
The mitigation for the scraping, would they have to do any mitigation on those?
There's no, they're, they are.
For wetlands?
Yes, they're, they're not, we're gonna, they're not gonna be impacting the wetlands at this time. There's a couple of contour lines that go into the buffer.
Okay.
It's not our intent to be approving that at this time. I think it can be accommodated without, and stay out of that buffer.
Okay.
Hunter, this, this obviously comes from a PUD that was approved in 2009, and nothing's been done. Just for discussion purposes, again, we have something in place now that prevents something like this from, I mean, where PUDs are approved and sit for 20 years without anything happening?
We have, we do, we have a sunset clause on those of two years.
Okay.
And without any, there is an option for an extension, but it has to come to you.
So, so if we, if we were to approve this amendment, and nothing wants to happen in two years, then what would happen?
Okay, if I get you an answer on that in two weeks?
Got it.
Okay. That's a great question that I haven't thought through. So.
Or?
I think, I think we can clarify that in the approval. I think we have the option to make it sunset back to the previous one, or just dissolve.
Yeah, my, my thought was, in the prior discussions, it just starts over.
That's, that's my gut, that that's what it does.
Yeah, so that was kind of, I, I think that was kind of my, or I was, I thought that's what it would be, because essentially, by amending it, you're dissolving the other one, the, the previously entered one from 2009, and if, now, based on current rules and regulations, if they don't do anything in two years, it's over, and then.
It starts over.
Okay.
And reverts back to, I believe, R1 or RA. Now, the caveat's always there, if we don't want it to revert back, we can make that condition.
But it becomes our option at that point.
That's correct.
All right. Counsel, any other questions for Hunter at this point, or from the engineer, developer, whoever's here? If not, and if there is not a motion for immediate consideration, we will let this lay over two weeks. Okay? No motion, lays over two weeks. All right, next is item number seven, which is a site plan review and approval, request of the applicant Jade Consulting LLC, acting on behalf of the owner FST Section Street Hospitality Group LLC for site plan approval of the Fairhope Hotel. Subject property is zone B2, general business district, and is a. approximately .25 acres. The property is located on the east side of North Section Street, south of Oak Avenue.
Thank you. And this one's easy location. We can walk out the door and see across the street. Um, it is zone B2 as you see on the left and the existing building in the, the aerial has been removed. The, um, setbacks in CBD, they're, we actually encourage people to build to the front property lines and, and this site does have two frontages on Oak Street and section. Uh, the building heights met, a rooftop terrace is proposed and meets those requirements. We'll look at those in a little detail. Elevations are provided on the, on the screen, uh, and we'll see some renderings, uh, in just a moment. The landscape plans are approved. Uh, really the only condition we're going to get to deals with the landscaping. Then their one plan shows a generator, generator in the, in a location where a tree is. So one of those, that's going to have to be resolved and, and subject to our STAS approval. Um, the sidewalks are provided on both sides on Oak and Section Street. Uh, parking was discussed at length. This, this first went to the Board of Adjustment for approval of a hotel use and parking was discussed. There are no, there is not a requirement to provide for parking in the CBD for this use. Uh, there were 14 units inside the building and a total of 13 added. Uh, two, two on street were removed for the ingress, egress. Uh, but there are six onsite parking spaces and a drop off for the, uh, the people staying there. So loading and unloading zone. Uh, there are no fences, but there are, is a retaining wall on, as highlighted on the screen. Dumpster locations were screened, taken care of, stormwater plans. Uh, there was a concurrent MOP that looked at some of those technical merits. That was approved at, by the planning commission. So we won't get into some of those. There, anyone that wants to know what those were, the minutes are available online. But I can tell you we're, we're satisfied for, with stormwater utilities and what we've seen so far. The site plan is on the screen here. So if you have any questions, um, we can probably, this is probably the best one to flip back and forth to, to address those questions. Um, landscape plan here, and as you can see between those two, there's the generator. There's a, a larger tree that was proposed. So that's the only conflict we do see. Um, heights of the roof deck were discussed at length and there, uh, we did make an amendment in the right of way ordinance for balcony heights. This was, this application came in before that. So while they didn't, I want to kind of give a little bit of applause. While they didn't have to change anything on the plans, uh, they couldn't quite get to our goal. We were wanting balconies to be at least 10 feet off a sidewalk, 12 feet off sidewalks. They got 11 feet, nine inches, I believe. And that's just in one location. This lot does slope a good bit. So, um, while they did not have to make that change, uh, they, they went to a lot of effort to accommodate that. So the renderings are on the screen. Uh, we have those from four different angles. Rear of house where the drop load off will be in the internal parking. And then also the floor plans. The rooftop terrace is on the screen. This diagram shows that it meets the, the amendments that we made to that rooftop terrace ordinance. And then we also have truck maneuvering to, to not be a conflict. Um, this came through planning commission with a vote of eight to nothing, recommendation for approval with one condition that I already mentioned. And we are as well making a recommendation for approval with that one condition.
Okay. Uh, counsel, I will, uh, before we get into discussion, I'll entertain a motion for item number seven.
Make your motion.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion in a second. Uh, now, counsel, any comments or questions for Hunter or staff? Um, I, I've got one and looking at the plan for the rooftop, it, it has a section or has a little area identified as the event area and it's got canopy, tent roof anchor points.
Sure.
Um, obviously I'm interpreting that to me and at some point they can put a canopy or tent on top of the roof, rooftop terrace.
Yes.
Does that, is that in compliance with our, uh, with our ordinances or as far as, I mean, obviously it's a temporary structure, but does that have any impact on what we're allowing?
Yes. So within the rooftop terrace ordinance, we do allow for temporary canopies. Uh, they can be erected for the event for 24 hours and they, especially being on a rooftop, the anchor points have to be integrated into the structure. So, and I do want to mention Jay's here is the owner and Jade is the engineer. Uh, so they might be able, if you have any specifics on those questions, but yes, this is, is in compliance. It comes, it becomes a little bit of an enforcement issue if there's ever problems, but I don't suspect we'll, we'll see that. Um, but yes, that, that is intended to be an area where a pop-up, you know, a kind of big easy up, if you will.
Right.
Have, have a, a sound anchor.
Counsel, any additional questions or comments at this point?
It's the anchor and the wind velocity, right? Something about wind. I remember something on that ordinance about how to withstand particular
Yes. So, so, and I joke about an easy up, an easy up probably wouldn't meet that wind ordinance. It's going to be, it's going to be a little bit more substantial of a structure for that, but it will be temporary in nature.
Yeah. And the reason I ask, I was thinking less about whether it blows down, which is obviously a better point. I was, I was talking more, you know, thinking more about us being able to visualize that from the road. Um, because part of, you know, part of what we're doing in, in the rooftop terrace in that discussion that we've had is, is, you know, both with what we allow, equipment, we allow people to put on roofs to be camouflaged and hidden.
Right.
But to allow a tent becomes more obvious and sort of creates more of a, something to look at. Um, but if, if we've addressed that with, with at least some sort of, you know, temporary status, um, with some sort of, I guess the question is what the penalty is if it's, if it stays up.
Being an enforcement issue might be something we have to amend in the future. If we have, if it's ever a problem, I mean, maybe we wind up with 20 rooftop terraces and it, and it does become a problem.
Sure.
But I think that would be something we would look at more on the enforcement side, code enforcement side of things.
Uh, all right, counsel, any additional questions, uh, for Hunter or the developer or engineer? All right. Hearing none. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Hunter. All right. Item number eight is a resolution to award bid number 23 dash 009 to McLeahany Construction Company for Founder's Park Athletic Track and Additional Parking Project with a total bid proposal not to exceed $2,480,680.04. Richard discussed this with us in, in the work session and, and obviously kind of went through what, what this request means from his standpoint. Um, I'll, I guess, I'll, before we get into a motion or a second, I want to kind of give my thought on, on this and I'm, uh, and that is that this number is bigger than we anticipated. Um, it's bigger than we discussed on the front end. Um, and maybe there are things in it that we don't need right now. Maybe not. I think that's really a debatable, uh, issue. Um, but more so I want to talk about kind of our approach to projects moving forward, whether it's the track or whether it's any of the other dozen or so sort of, uh, city projects that we're moving, moving, either moving towards finishing right now or moving towards starting right now is I want us to, to sort of take a more all-inclusive approach in getting these things finished when we start them. Um, you know, we, we, I think we've tried to do that since I've been on council and I, and I'm sure everybody's always tried to do that, but, but you change sometimes to get a lower budget number, which makes it easier to approve in a moment, but it doesn't really finish the project. Um, and so, you know, I'm, I, I know there's a lot in this and maybe, again, you know, maybe there's things to take out and maybe we could, there might've been a different way to do it. I, I don't, I'm not sure. Um, but I just, you know, I'm thinking long-term on, on other projects that I'd like to see us really get some of these turnkey finished so that we are not coming back five years, six years, 10 years down the road and saying, well, we now need to go back there, out there and do things that we really needed from the very beginning, um, even if it costs more money on the front end. Um, so with that soapbox speech being over, um, I'll entertain, I guess at least a motion and then we can discuss what we want to do.
Well, you want a motion? Let's discuss it.
Yeah, I think we should discuss first.
Yeah, let's discuss it first. Um, you know, I agree, Jay. Um, I agree. I think, you know, I have no problem with a turnkey project, you know, um, and this would be an excellent project. I just feel in my opinion that it's just a little bit out of order. The, the cost as far as the budget and us setting a precedent, um, that we'll, we'll do, we'll set a budget and then you can come back in, even though you followed all the bid rules and bid laws, no matter what we set as a budget, as a, as a council and a mayor, then we come back 1.2 over the budget, a hundred percent over the budget. Um, I just don't think that that's, that's something that we should start doing, you know, as stewards, um, in my opinion. Otherwise, I have no problem with this project. Um, I just think it's the order of things that I have a problem with in, in all honesty. But that, that's my opinion.
Yeah. I'll just say, I mean, I, I think first we, we, the bids were obviously handled correctly. If we've got four bidders and they were all within, I think 10% combined and number one and number two were only 3% off. So the bid process was handled correctly. And I think it's really just a, a miss on the numbers on the budget. I think we actually had the right number and we backed out the contributions we were getting from other parties. And then we looked at that number and then we accidentally backed out the contributions again a second time. So I think unfortunately though, because of that, what we had in our minds was in the 1.2 range, but that was not accurate. I think, I think that the city staff may have had a better idea of the, the true number, but, but anyways, it just got lost in the shuffle. I think for where we are right now, I a hundred percent agree. I don't want to do any more projects that are partially done. And I think if you're going to do this, and we may not have any desire to host an NCAA track tournament here, but you need to go ahead and build the track to where you could host a high school tournament. Otherwise, you know, you're just, you're just kind of going short sighted. So my thought is we either need to table it because it's not what we were anticipating, even though it is, I think, an accurate number, or we need to reject it and go back to the drawing board, revisit it in six months. But when we do revisit it, we still need the full engineering and drainage and we need to address the parking as well. I mean, I don't know that the price is going to change substantially, but maybe the market would improve a little bit as far as people needing, needing work. Kevin doesn't sound like he thinks that's going to be likely.
Yeah. My world, this in the contractor world doesn't go down, does not go down. But the objective of doing a turnkey job at the time that you're doing the job is because it will be cheaper than doing a add-ons over a five or six year period or waiting two years and doing this because the project continuously goes up in cost from what the original bid was. In this particular instance, with the bids being, one and two being within 3% and three or four being within 3%, I think these are accurate bids. I don't think they've been juiced up or done something to it because the way the numbers look, uh, you know, with what we see. And, you know, the, I'm having a hard time understanding. The engineer said it was, he put these in the parameter of what it was and now all of a sudden that's too, what we're saying is too much money. If that, if the engineer put that number out there, why was it too much money then?
I don't think, I don't think we had that at the budget process.
We didn't. It was 1.2 at the most.
1.2 is what we put in the budget.
One point, we weren't counting for 600, approximately 600,000 in contribution.
I gotta remind you, the soccer field was one then.
Exactly.
It cost six.
Well, and that's, I think that's kind of the
That's the gist of
We hadn't finished that project yet. Let's go finish that one first then, in my opinion, if that's what we're going to do. Instead of skipping over that, we hadn't finished it.
Again.
You know, so that's all I'm saying. Out of, it's just a little bit, in my opinion, out of order. If we're going to spend some money, let's spend it in an orderly fashion and complete some, I agree with completing projects and doing a turnkey. Well, let's go back to some things that we have, you know, and, and do that first and then come back. I, I just, and I dearly respect the track team. It's just, I want to be fair to all, you know, because there's been people, Volanta Park, I just, there's been people in waiting and to, to, to throw that money like that when there's been people truly waiting and kids truly waiting. I, to me, in my opinion, that's just out of order.
Yeah. And that was, you know, the, the purpose of me saying what I said at the beginning was really twofold. It was, it was one, to, to say just that, Corey, and that is that, you know, I think we have so many unfinished projects right now.
Let's finish them.
That, that I, I want us to figure out a way to get all those done and get them done right so that they are done. And that it's maintenance from here on out, not 500,000 next year because we didn't do something that needed to be done on the front end. But it's also in connection with this track, uh, you know, to be fair to the track community.
Yeah.
They've been asking for this for a long time. So they are not that far down the line of people who, who have been looking to get this. Um, but I also don't want to try to do something for 1.2 million when it really takes 2.4.
No doubt.
Because then it's not going to be anything any of us want. And so
Well, I don't think, I think we've learned very clearly from the bid process that the reality is it takes 2.4 and we just weren't prepared for that. So we got to go back to the
Well, my point is, you know, trying to, you know, instead of
I don't think we can value engineer
No, no.
Nobody's even insinuating that.
Yeah. Instead of trying to, you know, say, well, let's, you know, let's, don't do this portion and then it'll save us a couple hundred thousand and then we won't do this portion. That'll save us. If, if it costs 2.4, it costs 2.4. Maybe it doesn't. And to your point, Jimmy, maybe in six months, it's something different.
2.5, Gordon.
I got a cup of coffee says it'll be more.
I owe you a cup of coffee.
I'm not saying, I don't really have a dog in this, Hunter. I, you know, I would hope that we could do it. If we can't do it, I could certainly understand that. I'm just pointing out different aspects of what I feel is going on. Because one thing I do really, really hate is go to trouble, put all this up, all the numbers are there, put it out for bid and then reject it when they, whenever the contractors that did this met every obligation they're supposed to meet, but we're going to tell them, well, that's too much money. When somewhere along that I'm thinking, we knew it was because when the engineer designed it.
That's the thing.
It was there.
I think we as a council
So as that, we should've said, well, don't put out, that's too much money. Don't put it out for bid. But once it goes out for bid, now it's out.
Counsel president, can I address the council?
Please.
So the, the budget, I will take full responsibility for that. If you look at the capital projects worksheet, it has 1.2 million dollars. It says total cost estimate. Underneath that, it has the $250,000 that we were getting from Bowen County Board of Education, 400,000 that we were getting from single tax. When I looked at that, I assumed that was 1.8. When we first started talking about this project, um, we thought it was, it could possibly be a million dollars, a little bit more. And then as we got involved with the engineers, I knew it was going to be at least 1.8 or a little more. That's where the 1.8 came from. I did not go back and check with the treasurer. I just assumed that the 1.2 plus the, you know, the other funds that we were getting, but she'd already included those other funds in the 1.2. So that's where the overage is coming from. We knew our longest track was going to be close to $2 million. It's just, was just an, an era in the, in the budget and that's completely my fault. I should've asked some questions and I was just assuming. But the other thing I did want to mention was that, um, again, the track alone without the site work that has to be done is a million dollars. So the track itself is a million dollars. Um, I agree that we should not continue to piecemeal projects. It's the same thing we did on the soccer complex. It's the same thing we're doing on the baseball fields. And you see how down to the wire we are. When we continue to pull from our city resources to do these projects, other things get put on the When we continue to pull from our city resources to do these projects, other things get put on the back burner. Things that the utility should be doing. Replacing streetlights, putting in gas services, putting in water services, doing generators. All that stuff gets put on the back burner for these type of projects. So that's why it's so important that we do these turnkey projects. And again, it's something that I think our community would be proud of. Something that I think, you know, another recreational opportunity that we're providing, we've had a couple students go on to the next level and compete at the next level. And, you know, we're one of the only communities on the eastern shore who doesn't have a track. And I just feel like, you know, Fairhope's a community who should have a track. And again, it would just add to our recreational opportunities for everybody. And I have checked with the treasurer to ask if we could, you know, if we had the money, if we could pull it from, from some cash reserves that we have. And she said, we do have the money if the council chose to do this project.
So how much is the parking lot, to do the parking lot? It's, it's like 900 some thousand dollars, almost a million dollars. How much did we pay to do the parking lot at Valanta? I think we paid about 500. I think I remember the number was like 500 something, 400 and some thousand dollars. Like, those are the things that I saw that, I, I mean, I'm, you know.
And, and let me clarify, and Jay's going through the numbers, there, there's, there's two parking lot components here. There's resurfacing the existing, which needs to be done right now, okay? Meaning that if, if we don't do it in this part, you're probably gonna see on the paving list, at least in, in the next budget year. So that is just asphalt tonnage and, I'm putting Jay on the spot, he's gonna do a quick number. And then there's building a new parking lot that is in support of not only the track facility where it's located, but also all the other fields that are used around that as well. And, and, and I'm telling you, as, as an, as a public works director and engineer and as a design engineer, you don't build a new facility and not provide a place for people to park. That is, that again is, you know, next thing you know, Pat's chasing people parking off fields and things like that because there's, there's no parking and, and Yes. So, you know, the resurfacing, you think with resurfacing and striping is less than 80,000, correct, Jay? So, so, you know, that is just resurfacing that. I'll give you an example. The, the component price of resurfacing the youth baseball field parking at Valanta is 117,000 dollars. Resurfacing and striping. Striping's pretty expensive because there's a lot of it. The new parking lot is probably about, somewhere in the neighborhood about 350,000?
Probably closer to 400.
Closer to 400. So of, of that 480,000, 2, 2, 2,480,000, roughly 480,000 is new parking and resurfacing the existing park.
So that leaves, if, if the cost to build the track itself is just, call it a million. You say, I heard you say under a million. How much under a million are we?
985.
It was like 978,000.
Alright, so, so call it a million for the math. That leaves a million for, 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 I guess, getting it site work to get it up to, to level, to be able to
And there's a retaining wall on what would be the, the south side. And then there is, of that million dollars, there is, is it 250,000 of utility relocated, roughly? Yeah, so.
Yeah, and, and something Jimmy mentioned is, you know, I guess his, his idea to either table it or, or reject it. Can't, I, I mean, we either need to accept it or reject it, right? I mean, tabling it won't really
I think you can table it to the next, if you want to talk about it more, make sure that if you want to talk with him, make sure you knew where the cash is coming from. And if you want to do all that, you can table it and come back next meeting. But you do even need to reject our stuff.
So we can move on.
So we can move on to
We're just kicking the can.
If you table it, you're kicking the can for two weeks. But you only want to table it if you really think you might want to.
And, and just as a housekeeping item, you know, originally, if, with the bid opening in the normal path, this would have been two weeks ago or, or the last meeting. We did have to reach out to the contractor to see if they would continue on their bid because our document says their bid is good for a certain period of time before there is an action of the council either to accept or reject. So we would be in the same position to ask to extend it to the next meeting. And that contractor could decline, I mean, that is, because now it's, it, we are, we're getting out of compliance with our contract document.
Got it. Alright, council, I guess at this point, and we can have additional discussion if needed, but is there a motion to approve or deny?
I would ask Mayor and Richard, do y'all have a preference on those two ideas I threw out on which route you would prefer to see us go? I mean, right now?
So are they going to approve it?
Well, was
Or table it or reject it?
I'm not in favor of approving it right now, is, is, but yeah, between tabling it and rejecting it.
You can, but
I mean, I'm just curious if y'all have got a preference not to put you on the spot.
And, and, and I hate that Jeremy May implied that I was not in favor of this project. As you can tell by my build, I am quite a track and, and field athlete myself. My, my, my thing is, I know that, that this is kind of a strange project in this sense because I, I believe that there was, there was a group of, of engaged citizens that were interested and then all of a sudden, the school board came up with money, the single tax came up with money. So there was precipitating opportunities to pursue this project. So, you know, I, I do believe that it's a, a valid project. And the one thing I think I believe I'm correct in staying is, right now, for a certified track and field event, you either have to go to Baymanet or Gulf Shores, is that correct? So we would be the only facility in the middle part of the county that, that would, would be available for that. And, and I will tell you, believe it or not, I have a son who was a shot putter, his football coach made him do, do multiple things. And it was kind of embarrassing that at Daphne High School, they couldn't, they couldn't do their, their thing there because they either had to go to Baymanet or Gulf Shores, okay? So, you know, so my preference is, is, is that it's really only fair to everybody involved is that if you feel like you know what your decision is, is let's make it tonight because is, is, is putting it off for another couple of weeks gonna change anything? So that was kind of a poor answer, wasn't it?
I make a motion to reject the bid at this time.
I've got a motion.
I'll second that.
Alright, I've got a motion and a second to reject the bid. Any further discussion?
I would like to see us try to regroup in a few months and bring this back forward once we, now that we have a better understanding of what it might cost. I just hate to do something too quickly.
Yeah. Yeah, nobody doesn't, it's not that, you know, I'm a, I'm a component of the track, for sure. I just think we need to regroup.
Can I ask another question?
Please.
Okay, what does regroup mean? Does that mean rebid the project as it is? Does that mean six months down the road, we have the money now, make sure we have the money then? What does that mean? So we make sure we move forward with a clear understanding?
I, I would be, I think I'd be in favor of the project as it is. I just, I just think it's a different scope and cost than what, what we had in our mind. And it's just hard to say, well, we had 1.2 in our budget and now we're gonna go to basically two and a half. Even though I know 600 of that is still about 700 over what we had in our mind. And that's a lot to just, on the fly, say, well, we got the money available, let's do it. I don't know if people still want to do it at that price or not. And I think that's what, to me, that's what regroup changes. I don't want to change the scope.
Don't change the scope.
I think we need to do the, we need to do it right.
Yeah, my thought on that is, we either do it right or don't do it at all.
Yeah.
And if, and, I mean, and I, I'm hoping that in, whenever it's rebid, the price is less. I don't want to keep saying 2.4 is 2.4 because I hope it's less than that if we, if we're rebidding this out. I hope Kevin's wrong for the first time.
Me too.
But I think if we go back and say, well, it costs 750,000 more than what we really thought in our mind, is that still a priority that we want to do? Or do we want to do something else first and then come back to the track? But I think we want to do the correct drainage, the sod, the additional parking. I mean, I don't, I don't think we really need to change any of that.
Well, basically, it's a question of, you know, if you wanted not do it because it's too much money, I guess the regrouping is, is when, when is it going to be the right amount of money in the future? Because we now know what it costs. It's gonna cost this or more in the future. So do you want a track for this much more? Or no? Or do you want a track in the future for even more money? According to Kevin. Now whether or not, you know, if y'all have a, you know, you can look back at history as far as you want on contracted fees or anything else and there's, like inflation, it just goes up every year. So again, however you want to vote, it's fine with me. Understand, it ain't gonna get no cheaper. And if you want to build it as this is, that is the cost. But once this comes up again, make sure we all understand it's this or higher. Because again, you know, I, I, everybody knows, every time it comes to a bid, I get real horsey about bids because I don't feel, it's doing a real disservice to the city of fairness that we left this out, everything's met. We got the money to do it, we don't want to spend that much money, which I certainly understand, don't get me wrong, I understand all that. But the point of it is, it's not fair to the contractors to do that.
Well, I mean, I, I disagree a little bit with that, Kevin, in the sense that, I mean, the whole purpose of having to come back and approve or reject a bid is if it's out of whack with what we're comfortable paying, we get the opportunity to reject it regardless of what that cost is. I mean, it's, everybody who bids knows that it may get rejected. I mean, that's not, we don't, I don't think we owe anybody an, an approval just because you went through the bid process. And if that's the way it should be, then I got a different understanding of how, how it works. You know, I mean, you know, if, if, if we are not comfortable with the money as a council, then it's our obligation and responsibility at that point to reject it. My hangup at this point is, I, I think it's something we, we need to be doing.
I do too.
I do too.
I just want to do, I, I, it's, you know, I
I, I know, I mean, it's not a, you know
I mean, you know, I hate to be in the situation, I mean, to be honest. I mean, I, I really want to do it, you know, but I want to do it correctly and let's just, you know.
Alright guys, we got a motion and a second to reject it. Please.
I was gonna offer another option. Obviously, this is not gonna all happen this year. We have the opportunity to, to split the budget over two years because it's not gonna be finished by the end, by October. So if you're comfortable from a money aspect that way, knowing that you would spend 1.2 this year and maybe 1.2 next year or however the contract's paid out, you wouldn't spend that whole amount this year. Especially since we have the commitment from single tax and the commitment from the Board of Education.
Now, we'll say that, I do agree with that, but you need to understand that once that, it is approved to do, to do over two years, you know, two-time deals, 2.4 million, 1.2 will be, have to be in the budget next year once you approve.
Yeah, that's, we, we
So that is, that's, you know, first number on the next year's budget is 1.2 to finish this.
Right, yeah.
And again, that gets to where I would say, if we want to table it.
To me, it's getting down to, is this, does this field worth 2.4 million dollars, period?
So
If it's not worth 2.4, we need to reject it. If it's worth 2.
We, we understand, Kevin. We got you. We, yeah, I, I, yes. Yeah.
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 Please, please, absolutely. I'm, I'm, I apologize for not giving you the opportunity to speak earlier.
I didn't know you
Make you listen to all this.
No, no, that's fine. I'm Ed Kendall, I'm one of the coaches of the track team at the high school and this is David Fulford, he's one of the coaches. And I just want to point out a couple of things real quick. We've got over 300 kids running track now. When you add in the middle school and the high school, that's the biggest athletic team in the school system. And I also want to say that there was a poll done by CNN of students in high school, which was the absolute favorite sport. And it was track. It wasn't, you know, because it was students, it wasn't parents, you know, we'd all say football or something like that. But there's a huge need for this facility. We're a 7A school. I don't know of any other 7A schools that don't have the facility. We're running around the football practice field right now. We're throwing shot put into the grass. I mean, we're trying to high jump on a grass surface, which is ridiculous. Trying to, we have a pole bowl pit that's about 30 years old. And, you know, this is needed. The community needs us, the school system needs us. You know, this, it's crazy to think that we're a school of this size and we can't even get a track built. I mean, I just think that we need to step back. And yes, it was a 1.2. And we're concerned also that we're gonna lose the money from the single tax colony, from the school board. You know, you've got it now. If we lose it.
Is that commitment gonna grow away if y'all reject the bid?
Yeah, I mean, no.
Are those possibilities in that whole scenario?
I don't know, I think that would need to be
I, I think that, you know, we could revisit that in the next budget year and ask them for that same commitment. I mean, I think it's a possibility. Single tax, just want to make sure that Fairhope was spending as much money as they were. So I certainly, we will certainly spend as much money and get some. I think that single tax would, you know, go ahead and give their money also.
And I hear you on the track, because I, and I'm a big track supporter. That was my sport in high school. And my, my dad was in college and my, both of my daughters are track people at Fairhope, so I
Well, I mean, what, what are we looking for if we don't do it now?
I, I think the, the issue for us, one, is that, you know, normally, normal situation, the school is providing the track, but we're trying to do it as a city in lieu of the school system because they feel like they've already got two tracks, they don't need another one. I agree with you. We've got a five or six lane asphalt track that you couldn't, I mean, you don't even really want to practice on that.
It's, it's
You definitely can't host a meet there.
You can't use it. It's not in compliance to anything on the track.
Thank you.
I think the only issue for us is figuring out when, when we had, it's sort of like, you want to buy a house for 180,000 and in your mind, you say, I gotta, I got my money for the down payment, I'm borrowing 60,000 from a friend. I'm gonna buy this house for 180. Then you find out it's 250 and you say, wait a second. I can't decide this on the spot. I gotta, I gotta back up and figure out if I still really need this house worse than I need to do some other things. I mean, I, I, I want to have the house, I want to have the track. But I just think we need to either table it and figure out, okay, are we good doing a two and a half million dollars on a track? And what are we gonna have to scratch to move forward with that? Or do we reject and come back in a few months and do it? I definitely want us to wind up with a track.
It's multiple projects, though. It's not just the track. I mean, there's parking lots and things that we're being dinged for and we just want a track. We got, we can't even have kids practice. I mean, this is crazy. Right, I understand that, but I'm not
And, you know, have y'all, I'm guessing y'all have looked at the plans for the track?
Yes, sir.
And I've got no, no problems with soccer, but they're proposing a soccer field inside the track. Another soccer field.
It's not necessarily a soccer field, it's a multi-independent
But they're, they're pushing things out of the track that usually would be there because
Like your discus ring and your
Soccer field on it. You know, stuff like that. You know, soccer fields have their fields that you're saying aren't finished yet, but we're gonna add another one to the track.
Well, I, I think, I think my understanding of that is, you know, when you're, especially in order to justify 2 point, nearly 2.5 million dollar project, you want as much versatility in that use as you can get. And even though it might say soccer field, it's really used for any, any other sport. I mean, whether it's, I mean, allowing youth football to practice there or high school football to practice there. It's really trying to give some versatility to the space to, to, to make, make it easier and more palatable to spend that kind of money.
But I think you run into safety issues and things of that nature when you start doing stuff like that. Like, I mean, I can sit here and go through this plan and tell you 10 different things that are just whacked out, that shouldn't even be in there.
We're just wondering how it came about because we don't feel like anybody communicated to us to ask us any of the input for the track.
Like there's multiple pole bowl pits. Well, that's 30 something thousand dollars. We only need one, we don't need two.
Well, I think there may be some changes that can be made at this, at this stage.
Let me do this, council president. Let me amend my
I would, I would hope you would.
Let me amend my motion to table this matter so we can actually kind of talk about it again and see where we are.
I'll second that motion.
Alright.
Can we, can we have, can we have some input into this so that we could, we could discuss this so, so that we can maybe give you guys some guidance?
Input into the design aspect of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because there's safety issues that I see with it right now and, and hosting an event.
It's impossible. Well, I do know, I do know, and, and I got an email from the mayor as well, that Hellis is involved, that they do all the tracks across town. So I, and I've been to UMS's track, I've been to Troy State's track, I've been to all these different areas and they don't have any safety issues. I do trust that company. I'm just gonna put that out there, coaches.
Well, who, who drew this up? Did Hellis didn't do that?
I don't think so, but we're talking, I don't, I can't say yes or no to that, you know what I mean? So
Well, obviously, I would, I think we would all appreciate you guys pointing out safety concerns that you see in the design. Obviously, I did not design it, nor would I even attempt to. But, but, you know, I think, I think we as a city would appreciate input from the guys that are gonna be there day in, day out. But obviously, from a safety standpoint, that would be very helpful.
Sure, yeah.
Sure, yeah. We just wanted a little input and, you know, a little trend, you know, back and forth.
You guys trust Hellis, right?
Well, I mean, we do, but we'd still like to see what's going.
You said they didn't design it, though.
I don't know that. I didn't, I'm not saying that.
No, I mean, I know that they're, I know that they're building four tracks in Mobile, so obviously, they've got a leg up on most people in this area.
So I'm pretty comfortable with my due diligence with that company.
Yeah, and I think that they are only like nine hundred thousand dollars a track in Mobile. Now, I don't know if that included site work or what, but.
I don't think it does. I think that's just, yeah, I think that's just coming in, putting the track on the, on something that's ready to accept it. I think that's part of the bigger problem that we're dealing with right now.
Sure, sure.
If it's tabled, can we try to put it, because I mean, we, we need.
Table, table means it'll come up for a vote again in two weeks, or the next council meeting.
Can we meet with some people and go over everything in the next two weeks so we can?
Sure. Mayor, that'd be you. They need to contact.
We can discuss, all right.
That's an enthusiastic yes from Mayor Sullivan.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you for the school board's contribution.
Yes, I think that's, well, and I think that's, yeah, I think that's part of it. I mean, like Jimmy said.
I could second that one. I, I will second that one, that's for sure.
I will say, I will say this, that somebody said that they wanted to take the school board money and build a practice astroturf field for the football team. I mean, you got three hundred kids that don't even have a track to run on.
You need the school board to contribute.
We're working on it.
That sounds like a, a, a different fight that we, we're not prepared to have tonight.
Just, we want to keep the money. We want to get the track.
Absolutely. All right, well, I've got a motion and a second to table it. Thank you guys for being here. All those in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. That's the longest tabled discussion I think we've ever had.
Yeah, it had to be had.
All right. Thank you, though. I think that, I think, I feel more comfortable with that than anything else, and I, I appreciate y'all indulging us on that. All right, item number nine is a resolution to award bid number twenty-three dash oh one three to Donahoe Chevrolet LLC for a new Chevrolet Silverado thirty-five hundred HD, four-wheel drive crew cab with one seventy-seven W B sixty C A L T or equivalent with a total bid proposal not to exceed sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. Guys, this is seven thousand dollars.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, you've got your track. All right, item number ten is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of four hundred forty-two feet rolls of Tiff tough.
So moved.
Second.
You know, just want to finish reading it.
Go ahead.
All right, no, I'm good, no, I'm good. All right, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number eleven is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of one Toro Groundmaster thirty-two hundred four-wheel drive mower or equivalent for the Horticulture Department, and the type of equipment needed is on the Omnia Natural National Contract, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, the total amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Is the thirty-three thousand coming up fresh and then doing a, buying the second one? In other words, we need, we do need two, but we've only budgeted for one? Or how's this working?
We are currently budgeting two lawn mowers. Again, we'll put you on the spot, but I think the total amount is sixty-eight thousand. Let's get that sound right. Okay. They're not available. They're not going to be available to us until, uh, count of fifty or twenty-four. So we're asking to procure this one, and it's technically going to come out of that pot of money, but we're asking to keep the purchase requisition that's out there, lock-in price for these two John Deere's that will be rebudgeted, and some of the, the remainder of that sixty-eight thousand will roll over and we'll add this thirty-three back.
Right. Yes, it does. And basically, to answer my question, we budget for two. Because when I looked at this, it's, this is over budget, this item is over budget by thirty-three, which is a bookkeeping thing, I'm assuming. Because we do have the money in it for two mowers, which we're going to buy one now. And then, and then keep the other one, and keep the other one open to buy, purchase it when it becomes open.
You're talking about keeping both of the others open?
Keeping the purchase order out for, a purchase requisition out for both.
Right.
But we're only going to spend one mower worth of money.
Right, right. I'm with you.
We weren't committed the money when we took the other, the two, the thing about part of that money.
So we are thirty-three over?
Cause this item wasn't on the budget.
Yeah, because we have our budgeted items still open, which we're not going to get.
That's why, that's why I brought it up. I understand it now, though.
It's a push, yeah.
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 All right, I have a motion and a second for item number eleven. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number twelve is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the Perry Weather Outdoor Warning System and software for Quail Creek Golf Course, and the type of system needed is on the Bible or National Cooperative Contract, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. And as I so astutely pointed out during the work session, this is a weather outdoor warning system that warns you for outdoor weather. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number thirteen is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of, for painting Fire Station Number Three bays with Sertopro Painters with a not to exceed amount of eighteen thousand dollars and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number fourteen is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan, Sullivan has authorized to execute a contract for professional engineering services with Neil Schaefer, Inc., for preliminary engineering for F Y twenty-twenty-three tap project sidewalks on Blue Island Avenue and Fairwood Boulevard with a not to exceed of eighty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Make a move. Second.
And for those of you tuning in now, these are all things that we discussed during the work session. I've got a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion?
Is that an eighty-twenty split?
It is.
It is, but we are responsible for all the engineering, correct?
The upfront.
Upfront engineering, all right, got it. All right.
UNICEF.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number fifteen is a resolution that the City Council, City Council hereby approves and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency and the City of Fairhope Police Department to establish a joint, multi-agency working group known as the Alabama Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force to combat exploitation of children through the use of the internet or other electronic means. Chief, I, I didn't get the chance to ask you this, or I forgot to ask you this in, in the work session. Will you just tell us briefly the background of this?
What this is going to allow us to do is to put up an investigator who's going to be trained, and we'll have the, the LEA resources so that if we have to investigate these types of crimes, that we won't have to call them here. This investigator will just be able to go in and work these crimes.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion.
So is, is that a cost increase or a job, added job title?
No, it's not. It's not. It's just taking an investigator that we currently have, provide them with the training, and there's no financial obligation at all.
All right, very perfect. All right, I heard a, a motion from Council McConyers and a second from Councilman Martin. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number sixteen is a resolution that the City Council approves and adopts recommendations for the Public Works Department to create and fund three full-time custodians, defund five part-time custodians, and defund annual custodial services contract with Service Master for automatic renewal on January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to enter a month-to-month contract with Service Masters.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number seventeen is a resolution to participate in the Municipal Workers' Compensation Fund, Inc., for the purpose of obtaining workers' compensation insurance coverage, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to sign documents necessary to complete said coverage. And would you say ninety-one hundred dollars in savings is what this will, will create upfront? About?
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number eighteen is a resolution to implement an effective safety program for all employees and appoint Donnie Greiss as safety coordinator. We heard in the work session from Ken, this is sort of the second part of seventeen, which allows us to participate in this, in this fund.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number nineteen is a resolution to extend an additional two weeks for employees on the city's health insurance to complete bi, a biometric screening with Symbol Health Solutions by February six, twenty twenty-three. I don't think this needs much explanation. Just get your butts in there.
That's right. So moved.
Uh, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm not sure how I feel about this one.
Hey, just, just, you know.
Just go along.
Just, everybody needs, everybody deserves a second chance. Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number twenty is our appointments to the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board, appointing Anna Keen and Stephen Cyfers to four-year terms.
All good.
All good?
Yes, sir.
All right, counsel, I will entertain a motion for these appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number twenty-one is an appointment to the Fairhope Public School Commission to appoint Carrie Mackey and Shonda Matthews to three-year terms.
So moved.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We've already covered item number twenty-two, which feels like two years ago. Item twenty-three is public participation for non-agenda items. If you've got something to discuss, now's your opportunity. Hearing none, I will close public participation and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, meeting's adjourned. Thanks.